This is the first Tuesday of the month with Paca City Council Meeting.
First city council meeting for 2017. I do call this meeting to order and let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us. And also roll call.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
About ten present, we have a quorum.
Consent agenda. You have a number of items on the consent agenda. Is there any of those items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, Sandy, you have one.
I do, under number eight, unfinished business letter B. Additional information was distributed tonight. And that's it.
Alright, thanks. Anything else, council? We, I guess, is that under the regular agenda too? We do have one individual that, at this time, staff is asking that you take them off the license report number 1345. There's a Dale Howan on there. If you want to just cross that out on your license report and then the license report would be good without that name on there. Besides that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Hackett, second by Whitman, that we approve the regular agenda with the handout and the one change to that license report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion carried. We have announcements and correspondence, public input. If we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item or even council or staff that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please give your name and address and limit your time to three minutes or less. Dave?
Just kind of a question for public benefit probably. As I drive around, I see a few Christmas trees laying out in snowbanks right in front of homes. With my knowledge, there's no set for pickup. Is that true?
Right. Justin?
That's true. We're not driving around and picking them up. The service that was done before, that was, was that J.C.'s Center?
Uh huh.
Yes. They no longer provide that service. We'll take them at the recycling center though. But we don't go around and pick them up anymore. And we did put a note of that in the newsletter with the utility bills.
Yeah, utilities. So if somebody doesn't have a vehicle or, well, they got it to their house, so they ought to be able to get it away from their house, huh? Yeah, so. Okay. Anything else? Alright, let's move on then. We have unfinished business. We have the non-representative employees and their 1.5% raise for 2017. This has come to discussion again because when we negotiated with the police union, they approved instead of a 1.5% raise that would have only been for 2017, they, and we agreed to it, council agreed to this, is that we agreed to a 1% permanent raise, so that would continue beyond 2017. So the discussion I'd like to have tonight is whether you want to stay with the 1.5%, which would be only for the year of 2017, or if you would like to see it go the same as what the police union has agreed to, and that's the 1% raise, which would be permanent for this year and all future years too. I can tell you that staff has talked amongst themselves and they're okay with the 1% raise. That would be, so they would be agreeing to a 1% raise starting January 1st of this year, 2017, and then that would be permanent. So they would not have to worry about renegotiate or re-agreeing to something differently starting 2018. So, just opening it up for discussion. I recommend that we go with the 1% permanent as long as the employees are okay with that and it does match what we agreed to with the police union. So. Scott?
1% permanent, is that a 1% increase every year? Or are you just talking about, you know what I'm saying? Next year's budget will give another 1%. Is that what, no?
No, that 1%, but it will...
Yeah, it adds on. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, it continues on.
So it's a base builder, yeah.
Right. Dave?
Has there ever been a time, probably, that the city has offered less than 1%?
Yeah, I mean...
Common or not?
There's been a few years where they got zero.
Do you?
And it hasn't been that many years. I'll go that, that that was the case.
Permanent is a long time.
Well, that 1% is this year. They don't get 1% every year. I'm sorry, I might have said that wrong.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dave. Yeah.
No, it's not.
This, maybe I'm not explaining it right, but remember what we agreed to within the budget. We agreed to 1.5%, but that 1.5% would stop at the end of 2017. It would not carry forward as a builder, base builder for the future years.
What you're saying is the base rate would go back?
It would have went back to what it was at the end of 2016, right. And this way, the base will stay the same if you agree to the 1% going forward. So, sorry, Dave, and Scott. Right. Sorry.
Is the contract one year or two years?
The police is one year.
One, okay.
Yeah. Is it two?
Two.
It's two, okay, two, okay.
I'm sorry.
So are they 1% first and second year for the police?
Well, they're gonna get, Henry, explain that.
Yeah, they, it's called a me-too clause. Basically, they're guaranteed at least a 1% pay increase, but no more than 2%. But if you would give non-reps a half a percent increase in 2018, the police would get one. If by chance you gave non-reps 2.5% in 2018, the police would get two.
As I recall, the 1.5% that we were talking about was, Mayor, you wanted it base building and we were discussing whether it was going to be or not.
Right.
It wasn't for sure, base building.
Right. We were gonna decide sometime during the year. You're right.
The only comment I would, and I'm not saying that I'm objecting to the 1% at all. I'm just saying that social security is going up 0.3%. State employees are getting 0% this last year and this year. So 1% is actually not a bad deal.
Okay. So, what do you, anybody else comments?
I'd make a motion that we do the 1%.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Chestnut, second by Hackett, that we approve of the 1% base raise beginning January 1st of 2017. Any discussion?
Mayor, the, now, this, the police is for two years, but the regular employees are just the one.
Right.
Would we consider doing the same time period for the regular employees also? It would make sense. Just saying.
That's like a contract.
Well, it also guarantees 1% too and not more.
Well, the police are gonna get a minimum of 1%. And that's why you're saying, make it a two-year.
Yeah, that's just a thought I'm throwing out there. You know, it adds certainty to...
The police contract was negotiated though, and there's a big difference between the rest of the employees and the negotiating.
We don't negotiate with them.
Exactly. And so I don't know that we should be applying the same raises that we would give the police, which was a negotiated contract, and the term.
I don't see any reason why not.
Then the police department becomes the negotiator for the entire city staff, and I don't know that that's appropriate.
They would be, we would be agreeing to it, not necessarily negotiating, saying they're the negotiator, would just be something that we would be agreeing to or agreeing.
But then you'd set a precedent. Last year, you gave the raise that the police had. Okay, what about two years of police contract negotiated? Do you understand my point, Dave? You're gonna, they're gonna think, okay, whatever the police get, we're gonna get. That's what they'll be thinking.
That may be what they're thinking, yes, but wouldn't necessarily be true.
No.
So Paul is recommending to you, Laurie, basically, because you made the motion to make it a two-year, and if you're...
I'm not recommending. I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
Okay. So you're not recommending?
I'm not recommending. I'm just saying it's an idea.
Alright.
For other people, if it's not liked, then that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else? Any other discussion? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright, thanks. Thank you, council. The overtime, the next one is dealing with the overtime rules, and I'll have Henry explain that to you. But I did think it was important that we had some general discussion on this again because, as always, things have changed a little bit since we first approved of this. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page as we move forward. Henry?
Thanks, Mayor. Basically, Mayor, kinda explain that lead paragraph. You've read the stories and followed this. This new overtime rule has been blocked, a preliminary injunction. No telling when that'll get resolved. We did make some decisions in the budget based on what we knew at the time, and I wanted to hit the three positions that were impacted. On the first one, Peg, please weigh in if you'd like, but there was an increase budgeted for the youth services librarian to bring it up to the threshold of the rule, and the library board did discuss this, and I think through an email, you let us know that they are suspended the pay increase until those overtime rules get resolved. So I think that one was taken care of. And you had a part-time employee that you're just managing hours and things, right, to him?
We have another full-time employee who was classified as exempt, and when we looked at the exemption rules, we, the board decided to create that, to change that job description to be non-exempt, based on the definition of the supervisory pieces of it, rather than based on the wage. So that person will remain non-exempt.
Okay. The second position is recreation programmer. This position would remain a salary position because it was a salary position going into the budget. Under the new overtime rule, it would qualify, the position would qualify for overtime pay based on the wages. Of course, it's no longer the case. However, we did bring forward as a staff recommendation to increase the base pay by about $2,800, $2,900, because we wanted to restructure our health coach outside contract, and by putting those duties on the recreation supervisor, we'll be able to reduce our health coach contract or outside contract. We see a lot of benefits of that person being actually within the organization because with the outside health coach, she is in for four hours one day a week, whereas with the city employee, we're gonna have access to the person. They're gonna be coordinating all of our programming. The health coach would still stay on for the one-on-one, personal follow-up for, you know, privacy purposes and those kind of things. So there is an increase in the base wage that was proposed in the budget, and regardless of the overtime rules, we would still would want to pursue this course of action. And then the, and then the final...
So just to finalize that, that person then, they would still be considered exempt. Okay, so they're just getting the pay increase because the, of the increase in duties?
Right.
Okay.
And then the final position, we talked about when we started the discussions, and it's up here in the top of the sheet here, the threshold, when I initially published the rule, was about $54,000 approximately. When they finalized the rule after they got all their public comments, they reduced it to about $47,500. This particular position, the 2016 wage, was over that threshold, so the overtime rules didn't apply. But the premise of bringing forward the recommendation wasn't so, you know, totally predicated on the overtime rule. It was an opportunity to promote this position, this person. Two, department head position to realize their increased responsibilities, and for the last year or more, he has been kind of functioning as a department head. I think the only thing short of, he's not been attending the monthly mayor's meetings, but in many respects with the staff here, he's been functioning as a department head. So because the work touches all facets of the city, there was a lot of funding sources, and you can see that that increase would be shared equally among the general fund, Will Pac online, water and sewer funds. So, again, all these items were budgeted for, and they are in the budget. But the mayor just wanted staff to come back through and just review this with you, so you make sure you're all on the same page and you understand what's in the budget and how that new overtime rule sits now, and, you know, it could be a month from now, it could be a year from now, you know, we, I don't know. So, before they resolve that overtime rule. I don't know if you have any questions?
Okay. Do, we talked about this this afternoon, I can't, do we need a motion?
I think I worded it as just a review.
Okay.
So I don't know that there's any action needed, Mayor, because you've adopted the budget and these items are in the budget.
Okay. Alright, let's move on then. We have under new business, we have a new tractor backhoe for the street department. Justin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The tractor backhoe, which you are all aware of, last year had a major break in the frame. It was on our five-year plan, and because of that break, we basically expedited or accelerated it to 2017. So in the meantime, between that break and now, Roger Hanson, the street superintendent, has been doing a lot of work trying to find a good price, a solid machine for us, and we think he's done it. So my memo is on page 127. Following that is a bunch of information. 128 is basically a summary of quotes that Roger received from various vendors in the area, and you can all see that what we were looking for is something slightly used, pretty expensive compared to what we were hoping to get. Roger, though, did do a great job of finding one from Dodge County, getting ahold of those individuals there, and they have a backhoe there that fits our needs as far as size and specifications, very lightly used and fits within our budget. So he's worked it out and has basically a soft agreement, so I'm coming forward to you now to get approval on this, to go ahead and purchase this backhoe, and they have agreed to sell it to us for an amount of $75,000. And also, we're looking to add with that an attachment that we could use at the part where the back bucket is. You can just take it off while the operator's sitting there and then add a compactor, which I shown an example on page 133. So what this attachment would do, like I said, would replace the back bucket. Traditionally, an extra guy would be needed for compaction and use something that's shown, like as a vibrating plate compactor, which is shown on the sheet there that I created. Instead, with this extra piece of equipment, the operator could do it, which is much safer, quicker, easier. So we're looking to get that approved tonight. So I guess just wrapping it up, we have money set aside in our budget from the capital planning for 2017 in the amount of $85,000. So if we get approval for the backhoe at $75,000 plus an attachment not to exceed $9,500, we'll be under budget. One last thing I'd like to mention is that the $9,500 for the attachment is an estimate. We're still looking to get better price quotes for that as well. But the $75,000 for the backhoe from Dodge County is the best price we can, we've found, and we feel is the best machine. Roger and Jake went and visited, saw the machine firsthand, are very impressed with its condition.
Okay. So if you're okay with this, council, we would be looking to purchase two things. One, the backhoe, and then the other one would be the compactor, who we do not know who the vendor is yet for the compactor.
That's correct.
Right. But we will not be spending more than $9,500 on that compactor. But you do have an estimate in there from a company that says it's worth $9,500, basically, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Council? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve the purchase of a backhoe from, I'm sorry, which county was it?
Dodge County.
Dodge County. Nobody knew but me. For an amount not to exceed 75 grand, and then also the purchase of a compactor for an amount not to exceed $9,500 with not knowing who that vendor is at this time. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Do we ever consider leasing this kind of equipment?
Yes, we have. Actually, that is shown in that second page on 128. There is a lease or a buyback option where you, well, you kind of purchase it and then you give it back and they give you some money back. We've considered it. We like, I guess, the option to purchase to own, just because we feel that we take very good care of our equipment, and we can make it last long and make, get full value out of it, a better value for purchasing it and using it for an extended amount of time.
Okay. I saw that comparison there, but I didn't, I didn't see that as a true lease, not the way you would normally lease equipment. That's the reason I asked if we ever considered during conventional leasing.
Well, I guess it's been considered, but we did not really fully look into that. I mean, we think this is the best route, so this is what we fully explored.
Anybody else?
Justin, is there any warranty left with this one from Dodge County at all?
Um...
Seeing as it's a 14, it's probably not, but you never know. Did you investigate that, I guess?
I'd have to ask Roger. I know he said something on it. I'd have to double-check with him.
I mean, if so, hopefully it would make sure it transfers to us or something.
I want to say there's something, but I can't fully, you know, I'm not 100% sure on that, so I don't want to say for sure.
Okay, anybody else? Sandy, we'll call the roll.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright, thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Next, we have a special use permit for PIP Holdings LLC. Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this item starts on page 134. In front of you, it's a special use permit for Farm and Industrial Projects, also known as PIP. Chris Robinson is the applicant. PIP actually started in the community and then moved to Waiauiga, but they recently purchased the old Falk's production facility on North Royalton Street, off of Went Drive, late last year, and have been doing some work on the outside. The property's owned I-2, with the type of use that he's putting into that facility and the requirement for outdoor storage, the application required a special use permit from the Plan Commission and Common Council. The Plan Commission did review the application in December and recommended to the Common Council approval of the special use permit. Any questions?
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Keeland, that we approve of the special use permit for PIP Holdings LLC, which is located at 234 Went Drive. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next, we have license report number 1344, which is on page 152 of your packet. We would be looking for an approval of that.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Whitman, second by Hackett, that we approve license report number 1344. This is an operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next is license report number 1345. This is dealing with the taxicab operators and taxicab vehicle license. Staff has asked that you drop that one name off there, but all the other names are okay to approve, so we'd be looking to approve with minus that one name. Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve of license report number 1345 minus the one name. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. License, report number 1346. This is the dance hall licenses. These are annual license, not fiscal license, and that's why we're taking these at this time. Again, Henry, everything's okay there. Alright, so we'd be just looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve of license report number 1346. These are dance hall licenses. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Easement agreement between the city of Opaaca and Opaaca County Apartments. Uh, easement agreement, uh, between the city of Opaaca and, uh, Opaaca County Apartments LP. Henry?
I probably should've had Justin's name behind this.
Okay, Justin?
I'll take it, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, page one-fifty-five, all the way to the last page, one-fifty-seven, of your packet shows the agreement in, uh, an exhibit, or two exhibits, that is, uh, just to try and get you in the location. Western Avenue, south of McDonald's and Little Wolf Automotive there. Um, to the west of Western Avenue, on that vacant land there, is where the new building of Little Wolf Automotive is. Uh, and they are looking to tie in sanitary sewer. Um, we do not have sanitary sewer on Western Avenue in between Smith Street and Sunridge Drive, so an alternative, um, way to connect, uh, was brought up by P O B, uh, the engineers that were hired by Little Wolf, was to connect to this, uh, sanitary line behind the Opaaca County Apartments. Um, you can see from the map, it's actually kind of sandwiched in between a couple buildings. That manhole, that's shown in the highlighted area, in that line running to the east, is actually a private line, uh, but that runs into our manhole, uh, further to the east in the Sunridge Estates area. Um, so Little Wolf, which would be located west of Western Avenue, would bore underneath Western Avenue, uh, and connect to this existing manhole, uh, and we would take it over as it would become a public utility now. Uh, so it would be us to maintain, uh, in the future. We agreed to do this. We see it as, as a benefit to Little Wolf and also, uh, future development. Uh, there's not a whole lot of land on the west side of Western Avenue for development. Uh, however, Scott has, uh, from Little Wolf has expressed maybe splitting up the land and further development. We've also had some interest, uh, just south of that, in some more vacant land. So it opens up our opportunity for a little bit more development in that area, uh, now that we have, we'd have a connection there for sanitary sewer. So this is, uh, would create the easement between the city of Opaaca and the Opaaca County Apartments, mainly for Little Wolf Automotive development.
I have a question. Does that sewer line, does that meet the city's spec for sewer and everything? It's up to, up to grade up. It's good enough for what you need to do?
It does. Yep, it's an eight-inch line. Uh, Roger went out and inspected it. Um, he actually told me that they have cleaned that line out a couple times before, not knowing it was private. So, um, yes, it's in good condition, and so is that manhole.
Yeah, the, the obvious, uh, alternative to this, too, was actually to put in a lift station, which, one, would cost, um, Little Wolf Automotive money, obviously, to put in that lift station, but then that also means that there could be, uh, maintenance that needs to be done on that lift station, too. So it seems like a win-win situation here, quite honestly, especially since the, uh, lateral is in such good, uh, shape anyway, so... Any questions? Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
Make a motion, we, however you wanna word that.
Sure.
Except the easement.
Okay.
Second?
Motion by Whitman, second by Keeland, that we approve of the, uh, agreement between the city of Opaac and Opaaca County Apartments for an easement, uh, on the, uh, property for the sanitary sewer system. And we basically are taking over the sanitary sewer system also with this motion. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, so we're all set there. Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank your engineers for finding that, too. That's nice. Um, okay, next, uh, again, uh, we've been doing this quite a bit the last, uh, few meetings, uh, so we need a motion to convene into closed session, but before we do, uh, just for the people that are watching or are here, uh, we will come out of closed session, uh, probably without a recommendation tonight. This is more FYI-type things, and then we are going to, after council is done tonight, we are going to do, uh, uh, some NIMS training, so, and we have Eric Calverson here tonight, too, to help us with that, uh, so... That will happen after closed session. I, I don't anticipate that we'll be in closed session more than ten, fifteen minutes here at the most, so we'll see. All right, so we need a motion to convene into closed session.
I'll move.
Second?
Motion by Whitman, second by Hackett, that we convene into closed session with accordance with Wisconsin State statutes nineteen-point-eight-five, parent one, parent G, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
And Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, we're, uh, in closed session at, uh, six forty. I don't know, I didn't see a beat.